Okay, we'll call the meeting in order, please. Roll call. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
English.
Here.
Thank you. Just excuse me for a moment. I got a warm body. I can't handle this right now. Thank you. Okay, um, yes, sir. Go ahead.
I believe we call it. It's time for us to call to order the Historic Preservation Commission. And we have the roll call for the commission members.
Balzak.
Here.
Von Setviel.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Kai.
Here.
Glisch.
Here.
Vaino.
Who here?
And Sid and Lee are absent.
Okay, thank you. Um, before we go into minutes, Jeff Rau has something. We had a former chairman of the Plan Commission that was actually the chairman when I was on it many years ago that has passed away.
Yeah, we just want, I thought it was important to recognize Al Miller, who passed away a couple of weeks ago and will be buried tomorrow at the Prairie Mount Cemetery under Military Honors. He was a former Plan Commission Chairman.
Yes.
And served in the village in a lot of capacities, but very much an advocate for Lerner Park and just a great asset to our community. And so I think it's just important we recognize him and prayers for his family and just recognition for him.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is the approval amendments of November 4th, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve?
Greg, uh-huh.
Okay. Do it second.
Second.
Do it second by Mr. Mar.
I made the first.
And Mr. Mar seconded, correct. Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, fine. Motion carries again. Thank you. Move on, public appearances. Anybody here that wants to speak to anything other than what's on the agenda? We have a time limit for that if you want to. Nothing on the agenda. Nothing? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, we have a design. This is item four B. This is a design review of proposed blade sign and possible lighting of the proposed blade sign at 113 117 South Main Street, the Ready Set Restaurant. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm over here.
I know, I see you down there.
Um, I'll have Matt and Ally, if you guys want to come up and if you want to pull up a chair to the table there. They'll do a much better job explaining the details of the sign than I will, but just to catch everybody up to speed, so this is the former Charlie's on Main Restaurant. We looked at this for the, some of the window modifications back in February, March. We had a joint meeting over Zoom, so it might sound familiar and then the restaurant's name has changed since then, so Ready Set's looking open. I think either next week or the week after sometime in December here, knock on wood. Um, you all may have seen some of the renovations going on there. The plywood I think is still up.
The doors still, sorry, doors still need to be installed and we have got temporary glazing going on and then just some plywood up, so you know, there's a little element of surprise when we have.
Mm-hmm, yeah, makes sense. So just wanted to let you all know too that the window systems that you all reviewed and approved that open, like awnings, those are still being shipped over here, so there'll be some temporary glazing up if you see that when the restaurant opens and then later on probably winter, springtime, those other windows will get installed when they arrive. And so tonight, we're going to just be looking at a sign. What was proposed before was a simple wall sign and I think at that time there was more focus on the windows and other elements of the design, so now we're further along with the restaurant ready to open. They're proposing a blade sign similar to what was approved for the Kickback Cafe. Nice design here, sort of a gold and white and navy theme, goes with the historic flair of the block there. One element wanted to discuss tonight, so there's sort of two pieces of the approval. One is discussing the signage and then having HPC make their recommendation and then Planning Commission vote on that recommendation and items B and C here. The other element of this is that there's some lighting that's proposed of the sign and I'll have Ally talk a little bit more about the sign design. We have a couple images, I think, on the next few slides too that show some similar type signs and how the light, the letters are actually lit, so I'll turn it over to you guys for more detail.
Thank you. Yeah, Ally from Sign Art Studio, so I can talk a little bit about how the sign is fabricated. So as you look at the sign there, what it is, is a routed aluminum face with dimensional letters that protrude through the face about a quarter inch to a half inch, and that will allow the edge of the letters to illuminate the face of the letters. So the ready set, the actual face of the letters will not illuminate, so it's going to be a very subtle lighting. And then the border of the sign, so yeah, as you can see that it's going to be halo lit or backlit or even edge lit, so it's just going to be lit out the back. That, so these are larger signs. As you can see, this sign is only going to be about, about three feet projection, so it is a smaller footprint, but the illumination, you can see the night view, we did include that if you zoom out on this PDF, how it will look at night. So it's not going to be a glaring or anything like that. It's a very nice look. It's hand painted as well, so it has a lot of unique features. Oregon, Wisconsin is going to be dimensional on there, but it is not going to illuminate. It will be double sided and then the border element there is neon, which is a really cool element that we like to use, a unique look that is unmatched. And it's really important that the restaurant has an identity. It has a large storefront, so you know, this is going to greet customers as they go into the restaurant. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the other second piece to this decision is the discussion about lighting, if that's something that you all are open to. And if so, our sign code right now does not allow these types of signs to have any lighting other than ambient lighting, which is light from the moon, from street lamps around, any kind of change to allow this kind of backlighting, neon lighting, there's sort of two routes to go about that. One would be we can have a specific approval just for this sign, just for these addresses, and do something similar to what we're going to be reviewing here coming up with the Culver's sign, where we're doing kind of a mini DDP SIP just for the sign. We're allowing just this specific sign with some caveats from our sign code allowing this type of lighting. The other route we could go is if you all are open to having some lighting of these later suspended signs, we can work on crafting language and do a zoning text amendment, but that would affect all types of signs all across the village. Again, something we, the Planning Commission had a similar conversation about drive-through signs relating to the Culver's sign last month. So those are kind of the two pieces of the conversation is, one, are we, how do you feel about the sign design itself? Other than the lighting, it meets all of our size requirements, the height requirement over the, over the sidewalk. I think it's an existing bracket location from where Charlie's had the bracket there before, so it's in the mortar, it's not, you know, drilling into bricks or anything like that, existing place where that was affixed before. So those are kind of the two pieces of the conversation, sign itself and then the lighting and if so, the lighting is an option that you all are open to. How do we want to go about approving that? And that would involve coming back, either route would involve coming back to the January Planning Commission meeting for either a GDP SIP or a zoning text amendment.
Thank you. Arlen, you want to talk about with the HPC?
Yes.
Sorry, one more thing. Thanks, Jeff. I wanted to add, this is a picture I took the other night driving home, so the addresses here, obviously the two, Masonic Lodge and then the building right to the right there, just to the left is the main tap. They have, these are existing legal non-conforming grandfathered in signs to our sign code, but they have that traditional cabinet style internally lit sign for the main tap, so this was on, you know, some weeknight. And then Peaceful Heart has a wall sign, that's just a wooden wall sign, but it has gooseneck lighting that shines down onto the sign to illuminate the name of the store, so just to kind of give you some context of what the neighbors have out there.
Thank you.
Well, we'll start the questions. Elise, can, right now, the ordinance is no lit sign. We're getting, so we're getting away from the main tap and the Peaceful Heart type signs.
So no lit sign for, for blade or suspended signs, and they're essentially the same, it's just how they're affixed to the building, but for that type of sign, only ambient lighting is allowed.
With the ambient lighting, moon is not predic, or clouds and moon is not consistent set of lighting we can count on, but what about our streetlights? Can be pointed out where our streetlights are currently lighting, providing ambient light for that location.
Yeah, so there, it's a little hard to see, but there's a streetlamp right there between Burgie Jewelry and the northern half of the restaurant, so that would be the closest streetlamp to the main entrance there. I think, is that going to be the main entrance?
Where the blade, the original blade signage is affixed was right there where that arrow is, right in between kind of essentially the two addresses, which for us, just kind of dealing with the totality of the storefrontage would make the most sense of where we fix that. And also kind of trying to pay attention to other signage on the block without trying to crowd one way or the other when it comes to the main tap, or if we wanted to put it by where our front entrance will be on the building on the right, closer to the jewelry shop, we could just, from a, just a mathematical standpoint, I think it makes the most sense kind of keeping it where that original light sign was.
So I'd be curious as to from the rest of the board members, what their feelings are for having a lit sign when the sign code says no, and what their feelings are as relation to historic signage. Would you like to kick in?
I, I think this, in this case, the, the design's very, very tasteful and it's very attractive. My ongoing concern would be the next sign that comes up that is not as attractive and, and setting a precedent of that, you know, a lit sign was, was, was allowed. I, you know, and, and so I guess from that degree, I'd be more in favor of a, just a, you know, a SIP style that allowed only this sign with, you know, with a, maybe even a large number of restrictions.
Are you saying that you're in favor of the special exception for having this one be backlit or be lit?
Yes, I guess that's, in, in simple terms, I, yes, I'd be in favor of allowing this style of lit sign.
At this location.
All right, Jen, Arlen?
Randy.
So first thing, I like the sign. I don't have, it's, the, the lighting of it isn't, for me, is not a big, is not a big deal. I do, Elise, correct me if I'm wrong, we could approve it and everyone that came after, it would have to be approved. So it's, I, I wouldn't want it to be a blanket thing, so because in, in terms of, then we get to look at the sign, how tasteful it is, and then decide whether or not it could be lit, but I like the sign. I think it goes well with the historic building and the little bit of, the lighting, it, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt me.
I, I agree. I think with what's already been said, I think you don't want to make a precedent and have all signs in the future be able to be lit without coming to the walkthrough, but I think that's a very tastefully designed sign.
I wear two hats on this one, so if I put my HPC hat on, I, I think that it's a, it is a sign that is well within the spirit and intention of this, of the code. I think it's well done. It's, it's, it's a great looking sign, except for the light on the HPC side. If I put my Plan Commission sign on, giddy up. I like this sign with the light. So I think that because of the efforts that have been made and what everybody else has said, I'm in complete agreement that this is a sign that I think has the spirit of the historic history in place, meets the intention and would be an acceptable approach and, and situation to use the SIP process.
Okay. Do I have anybody else down there?
I, I would also agree with what's been said on it, yeah. I think the, especially the main tap sign being lit next to it, this is going to be the only lit sign downtown, and I think with that, yeah, I have no problem with the lighting.
If I remember right, when Main Tap went through their facade upgrade a while back, I think it was a requirement of the HPC that that original sign be retained at Main Tap. So just kind of keep that in mind. I thought that was unique for the time.
Of the time.
Yes.
Do I have, do I have, do I hear, I'm hearing a consent, general consensus among the commission members, somebody wished to craft a motion. I make a motion to approve, or make a recommendate, is it a recommendation?
The recommendation.
I make a recommendation that the Plan Commission approves the signage for the Ready Set for their blade sign with their suggested lighting approach to go as part of a plan development or GDP SIP process.
And I'll second, Arlen.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the sign, and I believe your intent, if I'm understanding, your intent is for this building only and it's not widespread throughout the downtowns. Correct, yep. Yeah, it said Ready Set, or could probably just make it the address, or?
It would be probably both addresses, just in case it gets moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? While just adding, a part of the discussion is that the shape, form, size is very appropriate, and as long as that the lighting is rather subtle, I think it will, it has a chance of being a very good neighbor. So with that, and we call for a vote, all those in favor of approving of the sign as presented and limiting the, this approval to this building address, or this, this project and this address only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Say none? In unanimous and good luck. Moving on your operation.
Appreciate it.
Well, okay, Plan Commission.
Thank you.
Any discussion, anybody in Plan Commission? Any concerns? Go along with what HPC says. Then we need a, a motion to approve the, the sign as presented with the contingent on the SIP, GDP procedure. We have a motion, do it a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We'll see you next month when, for the, all right, thank you.
Yep, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, the sign has already been fabricated, so they will be putting that up shortly before the restaurant opens, but the lighting will not be turned on until we go through the plan development review process.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Thanks, guys.
I believe we move to see in the agenda where we adjourn the Historic Preservation Commission. Do you have a motion to effect?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Jen, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourned and good luck to your meeting and may you be out at an early hour.
It's deep, whatever it takes, but Arlen, if you'd like to stay and, and watch.
Did you see how it's done?
Oh, no, not, yeah, no. We do pretty good though, so. Okay, we're going to move on to item D, four D, which is a public hearing to discuss and consider recommending to the Village Board a GDP to allow planned development zoning, 1053 and 1075 Park Street. Applicant Craig Culver. At this time, we'll open a hearing. You're back on, Elise?
All right, so as mentioned, this is carryover from our discussion last, last month about the route to go to allow a larger drive-through sign for Culver's. So at the last meeting, we also approved a zoning text amendment to allow two drive-through signs, so that's been approved now by the Village Board. This GDP SIP is just to allow a size flexibility for the drive-through sign, to allow two fifty, five zero square feet per drive-through sign. I think the exact size might be around forty-six, forty-seven square feet, but just wanted to give them a little bit of wiggle room, just in case anything changed, who didn't have to come back through. But this is just plan development for the sign, all of the site plan approvals, all the other reviews, they met all of the requirements of the plan business zoning district, so there's no need to do a full plan development for the whole property and check that on the zoning map and everything. So this is, again, just for the sign, this is the same sign that you've seen before, location hasn't changed, and should other fast food restaurants want to increase the size of their drive-through sign, they would have to, I would recommend that they would come back through this plan development process and you all would get a chance to see where the sign's located on the site, make sure that it's screened, it's not visible from entrance corridors, if there's landscaping that needs to happen around it, that kind of a thing. So I know we've got some of the Culver's team here, if you all have any questions. Otherwise, we've seen this a couple times before, so just moving it through, hopefully the last step for Culver's here.
Okay. Um, petitioners, comments? You guys have anything you want to say to us?
One of the things that Elise asked us to take a peek at regarding the sign was signs like this at restaurants in Dane County, and we've done that. So just to run through a few, Cross Plains, forty-six feet, Madison, Middle Point Road, forty-six feet, McFarland, forty-six, Middleton, forty. You'll feel, you'll see a few forties mixed in here, but everything else is forty-six. Mount Hora, forty, Nuclearis, forty-six, Stoughton, forty, Janesville, forty-six. So it, it really is representative of what we're building everywhere across the country at this point.
Okay. Public comments. Anybody else in the public want to make any comments? No. Plan Commission members, what do you all have? Any questions? We've seen this quite a bit.
The only question I've got is, I had asked when you first came through regarding the analog and digital, because of the proximity, have you decided or have you determined as to whether or not this is an analog or digital sign as far as the speaker goes? I'm sorry?
Didn't you call it the squawk box at one point?
It's the old ones, yeah.
The reason, a couple of things. The proximity of the two signs close together, the digital, you don't have to crank them up as much, so the sound quality is much better, and they also don't carry as far, so that's why I was just asking is that if you notice whether or not they're digital or analog. The analogs are pretty much what majority of them are, and that's why they have squawk boxes, because you turn the volume up to eleven, so.
I remember you making the, that comment, and I, I did look and I think what we have is the analog right now.
Good. Anybody else? Any questions? No other comments, we'll close the public hearing, move on to discussion, possible recommendation. Anybody have any comments? We talked this thing through quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go back and look for a recommendation to the village board for approval of the GDP to allow planned development zoning in one fifty, one zero five three, one zero seven five Park Street. So moved. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Who was first?
Meyer.
And, and Larry just seconded it? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item four E, discussion, possible recommendation to village board for the SIP at this facility. Do we have a motion, recommended village board approval of the SIP implemented for the signage at one, one zero five three and one zero seven five Park Street, applicant, Mr. Culver. You'll move.
Second.
We have a motion of a second. Mr. Meyer, for a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to item four F, discussion, possible recommendation to village board extraterritorial certified survey map for property at five two seven five Lincoln Road, it's in the town of Oregon.
This is over by the water tower. Properties come up a couple different times, conceptual plan, but at this point, I know Mr. Parsons that owns Blue Haven Farms, this is in my screen, so you can't see where I'm circling, but.
You're gonna circle the Blue Haven Farm.
Right there, so he's been eager to sell off some of his land, and when Mr. Mellem, who lives at the CSM, right there in the bottom left corner. Yeah, so he lived there, he heard his neighbor was looking to sell some land, he decided, I'd like to buy the land in front of me and make sure I don't have any other neighbors, so lot one is being purchased by Mr. Mellem, or has been purchased, and then lot two is the remainder of Blue Haven Farm. The change that's proposed as part of this CSM is a small little area in that kind of panhandle, so you can see there's a, a little kind of etched in line there where it's number two fourteen point four three, so that little rectangle of land was in lot two, sorry, was in lot one, essentially giving a little bit more space around the farm, so that's gonna remain with lot two, so it's just a redrawing of that property boundary there, so it's all internal within kind of the farmland and nothing that's visible from the road, so as far as I know, Mr. Mellem isn't planning any kind of development there, he wanted to buy that land to kind of protect it from development.
Okay, and in the past, what we have done is simply taken no, basically no comment, no position, no position on the certified survey maps outside of, even though we're extraterritorial, just extraterritorial jurisdiction, we don't take any position on it. So we need, if you're all in agreement with that, I think we're not gonna change, we'll be the same, so we'll need a motion, let's see, just, yeah, recommend the village board to take no, no position or no, no position on the extraterritorial certified survey map for property near five two seven five Lincoln Road, town of Oregon. So moved, Moles on? Second?
Blake?
Let's second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six, yeah, six, I'm sorry, six G, oh, that's what I just did, six, what am I doing? Six G, I got it. Okay, discussion, possible recommendation to village board for a condominium plat for the Villa's condo development, it's the corner of Highway CC and Peterson Trail in Highlands of another subdivision. Okay, so F comments. Do we have anybody here representing them?
Yes, Connor Kearney here from Forward Development Group, so this is a sort of a carryover from a series of approvals for the Villa's properties, I think it's the early June meeting, you all approved the GDP SIP for this property, in the flurry of activity happening at that time, and I was severely, heavily pregnant, so I'm just gonna blame it on that. We missed the opportunity to approve the condo plat here, so my understanding is there is, there has been a buyer or an entity that's ready to begin construction soon on the Villas, and so wrapping up the plat here is a final step in getting those construction plans finalized, and then getting some site work started, so these, it's a condo style development, one main route, you know, Tavoli Circle here to access all of the parcels, the cluster box is in the middle of that little teardrop shaped turnaround there, and then the multi-use path is going through the property as well to connect to the rest of the neighborhood and the path along CC that's been installed now, so layout hasn't changed, I'm sure Connor can answer any questions you all have, but this is just wrapping up final approvals that we missed, and that collection approvals for the Villas.
Okay, applicant have any comments? You don't have to, you want to, it's fine. Come on up, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Connor Kearney with Forward Development Group. Elise, thanks for the summary there, that, that pretty much captures it. Just to give a brief update on timeline, we did go through the GDP SIP approvals, I think that was brought in front of the board and finalized in early to mid-July, and the phase three construction progress is just about complete out on site, so this, this pad site is, is ready, and we do have an ownership group formulated for this parcel, and we're hopeful to break ground on the first few units in the spring timeframe for, for the Villas, so I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Plan Commission, questions?
I had a comment indicating it looks like some larger trees around the perimeters and such, to make sure we have adequate vision triangle at the intersection of CC and even coming out of Tavoli Circle onto Peterson on the north side there, the trees look a little tight, so. Again, I don't know if those are tall evergreen type trees, I suspect that they are, so we wanna make sure we have vision coming in and out of those areas.
I don't know if I've seen the, if the exact species have been chosen yet for that area, but.
Yeah, I, I believe the, the landscape plan was approved as part of the SIP process.
Landscape plan's already been approved.
Yep, yep.
That's, I think usually something our village engineer takes a look at, but I can just double check that. I think on the scale here, it looks like they're tight to the corner, but probably in reality, they're a little bit further back. Something else I forgot to mention, I don't believe I've gotten the final letter from our village engineer on review yet, he's seen this all before with the GDP, but I hadn't received that before the meeting. There's also just a few little things that Jessica Vaughn, your planner, has been coordinating with the fire department, some hydrant locations, so I'll just wait for a final approval letter from the fire department before the plat gets signed.
Yeah, you'll see on, on Elise's note to us, memo to us, that there's two recommendations as contingencies to the, uh, recommendation for approval.
I don't anticipate any of those being like changing, you know, changes here, but just wanna make sure that they get the final.
We'll, we'll incorporate those into the, yes, that'd be fine. Anybody prepared to give a motion? Or do I have to put them together?
You wanna do it?
No, no, it's, you guys do the motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the, to make a motion to recommend to the village board condominium plat for the Villa's contingent upon the two final recommendations and approvals from the village engineer and the fire department.
Okay, we motion, do we have a second? Second, Moles on? Moles on, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Item six H. This is a concept plan review for proposed multi-housing, multi-family housing in eight seventy-eight eighty-eight North Main Street. I think it's still the earth for the body shop, but.
She's still working over there, right?
I figured he is. Mr. Mr. Coyle.
Yeah. Yeah, how's it, how you doing?
Good.
So that's the, my, my big questions for, I guess, are what, what does everybody think about the use, the change of use, and then if you're, you're interested in this, I guess my questions are, what do you think about the design that we've put together here?
So just to point out here on the memo, this is been in our plan business zoning and kind of plan business area of our comp plan for quite a while, but as we're starting to see some reinvestment in North Main Street, I think it gives the planning commission, the village board opportunity to think about what else North Main Street corridor could be in the future. We're due for our comp plan update in 2023, so this is something we'll definitely be talking about, but I see this project as potentially one that would help spur some redevelopment and reinvestment that's already started on the North Main Street corridor, but a comp plan amendment in the short term would be needed to change this to allow multifamily housing, and I've got a couple, I think, concept site plan here, and then a few elevations that is, the architect has gone through, so we can talk about use first, and then, yeah, get into design and layout of the site.
So I, I would guess that the actual unit count will be a little bit lower than that, the initial fifty-two or fifty-four, that was just from the engineer, then when we had the architect actually map some units out in there, it will probably be forty-eight, forty-nine, if, as, as drawn.
Anybody? I, personally, I have no problem, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just say, I mean, I think if you probably all remember when Dorn was at one time proposing across the street, I think people were sort of excited that that was gonna be redeveloped, and I think this, this is, for me, it's kind of nice that it takes, takes care, maybe, I don't wanna say light, but I mean, it, it, I think it, it makes the North Main a little bit nicer, if I can say that politely, I don't.
You're walking on the edge.
Am I, yeah, well.
You did fine.
And I think, I think Adam, I mean, we, we know your other apartment, you do, you do good work.
Yes.
Thank you. We try. A lot of luck in the colors, I think, on the last one.
So this is conceptual, yeah, so what do you, I'm, I'm in favor. I think it'd be great, and as far as you said, the comment about across the street development, that's, that's always still up in the air.
Yeah, it could, it could come back.
Which could happen, and which may even be sparked by this, who knows?
Yep, I think their GDP is still good for a couple years, yeah.
Yep, we just have to go through a different procedure to get it ready, so you can do that there.
Did you all wanna just take a look briefly at his proposed site layout and any of these elevations, if you have any comments?
Well, we've had.
There's not a whole lot of choices on how it gets laid out on the site, because it's such a, you know, deep narrow site there, but.
Yeah, it's pretty limited. The, the parking in the front ends up there, because that's where the handicap parking would end up, so the parking on Main Street, it's, and then he was just saying that he's got some slope issues, putting the handicap parking on the south side of the building, so that's how that comes, and then the underground parking, that's just the best we could come up with. We did redraw to him a lot of times. I, I do like adding the L to the building, we're trying to screen part of the parking. This should be enough to screen the parking in the front, and then there's a little bio-retention pond in the front corner, that should be a little bit nicer looking at than cars right on the road, and a little bit of the driveway to get in without hitting somebody in front of you, but I'd be curious if, you know, you have thoughts and feedback, it'd be very helpful.
Just for reference, this is the Quick Trip, this is a set of apartments right here, this backs up, this is actually village-owned property, because this is the back of the detention pond for the Mary Hill, Phase Five, or Five, Six, and all the future phases, and then this is a St. Mary Cemetery right here, Catholic Cemetery. Quiet, quiet neighbors to the north.
I know, it's funny, initially, we were joking, and I didn't think that would be a good neighbor, and after thinking about it, there's.
Nice, nice place to walk through at night.
Yeah.
Adam, I think that this is a nice redevelopment project.
Yep.
I think that the location is fine because of this sort of step down from a cemetery to the convenience store that's at the corner, I think that it's a good use for this location. I think the building is attractive, I think that the front entry needs to be pumped up a little bit, and I would, I would push back a little bit on whether or not you need to have the parking on the front. Our wonderful new parking code, you've got way too much parking, so you can get rid of probably fifty percent of your parking on the surface right now. I think that you could probably, by doing that, create some green space in the front of the building adjacent to the street to take up some of that grade issue that you might have. I, I, I think that by doing that, you'd be able to engage the street a little bit more, give the building a little bit more street presence, and create something that's a little bit more welcoming as you come into the village. I would even go so far as to maybe look at, is there a way to incorporate some parking with the drive access that you've got in the back with the truck turning radius? There might be a creative way to incorporate that to minimize some of the asphalt that you have to use, because right now, it's, it's asphalt just for one use, and there might be a creative way to sort of get double use out of that, and save yourself some money in the process. I think that this is a nice, nice, I think you oriented the building in the right side. I don't think that flipping the building and putting it adjacent to the Quick Trip would be a good solution with the lights and everything else, I think that this is a good location for it. I would look at, at what you could do with some of that additional space that you might get with creating a buffer between the Quick Trip. A fence is an easy way out, maybe you could do something with green scaping or, or something. Yeah, so it's just sort of.
So where, would you picture then, if I try to redraw the front, would you try to do that, pull it up to the street and get a bit of the, the parking spots along Main Street?
I would, if, if I had a crystal ball and I could do it, I'd get rid of all of the parking in the front of the building.
That's, I mean, that's, that's where I started, you have to push back, so I will try again.
And I would put them where you've got the truck access in the back, and see if there's a way to maybe get double use out of that drive aisle that's right now only being used for truck turnaround, and getting some parking stalls on either side of that drive aisle possibly, or on one side, and then take that space that would have been parking lot between the street and the building and turn it into a green space. I wouldn't push the building right up to the street, I think that's, that's a little too much.
So you can see on the, the plan from Quam, you can see where we've got it drawn, I think the architect has it pulled up just a little bit farther than the engineer on this one, and you can see where the current buildings are, where the current earthers and the current audience at the gas station. Would, would you say there's an ideal spot from the, you know, commission's view, is there an ideal setback?
Well, that's, I'm, I'm not gonna make that call, that's your call.
Well, something to target, it gives me something to shoot for.
Typically, we see thirty feet for residential, can be as little as, I think, fifteen or twenty in the industrial district for a front setback, so I would say it's kind of shooting somewhere in that range.
Well, and you're thinking, well, where's the sitting, are you hitting a little, a no, um, opposition to where it's placed now in the property, as far as the setback?
I don't think that works, position is, is bad, moving it forward might be good, but I wouldn't move it to fifteen feet, that's uncomfortable.
No.
You know, thirty feet is probably a nice.
Especially with the traffic on the, on the road, probably you don't want a little space.
Yeah, but if that, but that, the entry that you've got, that you're calling your
front entry.
Right.
It's, it's less architecturally impressive than the two entries along the parking lot.
I agree.
So I would look at possibly pumping up that elevation and entry to sort of, and then incorporate that into some green space on the front side to make that a dynamic space to be.
Okay.
John, that, you were talking about the truck turnaround, drive aisle, did you see that's also what's proposed as the underground parking access too, so.
So I'm not saying that all of it could be, just like maybe some of it could be, to try to get some double use out of that.
Maybe kind of curvy along the back of that turnaround or something.
So I, I, I guess I took that as putting some spots coming off that drive aisle, but you're thinking along the drive aisle? It just, just ask him what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're gonna probably get into slopes that are twelve percent on that, ten percent, and you don't want parking stalls on that, because you open the door and then you're hitting your neighbor, so there's gonna be. So there's going to be sort of a break-even point to have them noodle on it a little bit more. Just having drive aisles for the truck turnaround is an easy answer. There's a, there's probably a better solution than that.
And Adam, with the changes to the parking code for apartments, is, you know, one, one and a half spaces for every unit, doesn't matter the bedroom size, so with forty-eight units, it'd be a seventy-two parking spaces required. If you were at fifty units, seventy-five, so seventy-two to seventy-five.
So, I mean, I have a lot more than that shown. I think my numbers are going to show that I might need a little bit more than that. And I think I'm going to be in that probably one and three quarters. And just, I, there's no.
Yeah, to the south.
So you're saying leave space in that.
Great, can I just say? Yeah, echo with John, I like his idea about in that front, Adam, adding some green space in there, I think that, that would make it really sort of soften it and make it really sort of attractive as, as you can. And I would echo too about putting it too close, it is, you know, you're going to have cars and stuff that could be maybe a little loud, I wouldn't put it too close either, I would agree with that.
Probably not much closer than the building that's there right now.
Yeah.
When I first, when I first saw this with the little parking lot up in the front, it kind of rang out to me as maybe a unique spot to, to do some mixed use. I don't know if you explored maybe having, having some commercial space on the first floor facing Main Street there, and it would have its own little parking lot in front, and could have a couple of small businesses in there, and apartments behind it and apartments above it. I don't know if that's something you explored.
It was not something that we had talked about, it's a little bit tough, I think it's harder, obviously, but the, the parking that did, it had two, two sets or two rows, it was a double row parking, I did pull one out, and that was where the, the handicap, I mean, they came in, but I think there's, you know, it can't be impossible. But that was not something that we had considered up to this point.
Okay. Nobody's objecting. Like the idea, I like it. All right, anybody else have any comments? Have added.
Okay, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Move on to item six I, concept plan review for, of a proposed general development plan revision of Oregon Parks duplexes for properties located near the corner of Oregon Parks Avenue and North Bergamot Boulevard. Applicants All-Star Properties.
All right, so this area probably looks familiar to you guys, we've been talking about this for about a year and a half here, so the, on the second page of the memo, see what the GDP that was approved in March of this year showed, got Beehive there just to the south of lots one through three, then kind of this floating island of land, and then Liberty Park is just off the page to the east there. Would have been proposed, this is actually Mike Slavny idea, was let's, for these central island of duplexes here in Oregon Parks, do an alley-loaded option to reduce the number of driveways that are spilling out into Bergamot Boulevard and kind of create a more welcoming feel rather than just kind of coming into the neighborhood and having a whole bunch of asphalt greeting you. So that plan, and we kicked around for a while, this was approved, coming back to actually doing the plat, getting into some of the utility layouts, we realized that the alley was probably actually creating more problems than it was solving. Gets tough, I don't think we're actually, we get into some messy legalese where we're putting public utilities in a private road, this would have to be a private road because it doesn't meet our standard road widths. And then there was some other reluctance to kind of putting in laterals and whole conversation with the developer, the, the plan they came back with, Jeff and I think solves a lot of the problems. It actually eliminates one of the duplex lots in the island, so going from eight duplex lots to seven. But there's an opportunity here for some of the lots that are still on the corners to have split faces, kind of like we see on some properties on Alpine Parkway where they're on a corner, and when you're on the street, it really just looks like a single-family house, but one of the duplexes has a driveway facing on one corner and the other is on the other side. So I think here for probably any of the corner lots, but especially the ones along Bergamot Boulevard, there's an opportunity for some of the driveways to go north or south, so we could kind of keep that number of driveways out onto Bergamot to a minimum since that's a little bit more heavily traveled now with Howland and Netherwood opening up there. But there'd still be cluster box location, I think, for either one or two for the development, I'm not sure if they have that drawn on here yet, but the laterals for the duplexes would just be cut through the sidewalk like they are in every other case around the village, they'd be brought into the center of the lot and then they're split. We anticipate, we've seen this trend, you all know, we do a lot of those zero lot line duplexes, and we anticipate, regardless of which builders build this now and how they're managed today, that eventually these will likely all become zero lot line duplexes, so we want to make sure that there's separate service for both of those units, and that's a requirement of our zoning code as well. Jeff, I don't know if you had anything else to add about just the move away from the alley or any of the.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we, we struggle, well, I struggle all the time with private drives, and I, I would strongly suggest in the future, we always try to avoid them because they become difficult to maintain by associations. People buy into these areas and don't realize they're part of a private drive, and then want to know why they have to pay for the plowing when they already pay their taxes. They are not setting aside money for future maintenance of the asphalt roadway, which can be a considerable expense to maintain over time. And then we end up with the problems with utilities. If, if these utilities are put in a very narrow private drive, that's why it, it makes it very difficult to maintain, and if you make them private utilities, it's again putting a very expensive maintenance and possible repair burden on residents, and they typically have no idea that that's their responsibility. So that's why we, we've really pushed the developer to go in this direction. Staff wholeheartedly supports this type of new concept. You know, this area has obviously gone through a lot of review and changes over the past, what, twenty-two years or so? And, you know, well, Keo's here tonight, Keo Ladopolis, with All-Star Properties is here tonight to answer any questions, but when they came back, we kind of were at loggerheads over the private drive and some of the problems we saw with it, they came back with this, and it also saves them having to do the right-of-way, the, the major changes to the right-of-way that they were proposing, which would also require some rerouting of some utilities, and it just, this is a good fit for a secondary plan for what was to go out here originally.
Okay, you're obviously in, in favor of it, so.
Absolutely, yes.
Yep, so if you all are in support, we would do a revision to the GDP to, there was some specific language about front porches and the alley locations, so we, you know, some of that language and what they proposed here is on the next couple of pages, and then we would also do the plat review alongside that, probably at the January meeting.
Anybody have any opposition to it?
So these would all be duplexes?
Yes, still duplexes.
And then do we need to put language in that the corner lots need to have a curb cut on each street?
We can, yeah, that can be a request, and I think that's something you all were open to.
Would that be a requirement? Or I think we looked at it as it's a nice option for it, but I, we had not proposed it as a requirement to the developer.
My opinion, I think it should be a requirement, I mean, one of the things that we were trying to do is keep traffic and curb cuts off of the main arterial.
Okay.
So doesn't that contradict it? I mean, if you're going to require that they're going to have curb, you're, you're requiring two more curb cuts with that language on Bergamot.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, I'm only, I.
Oh, I see.
Because you have six versus four.
Right, because I don't think with the way that, what are those lot numbers?
Oh, yeah, no, but the way the lot.
Right, I.
They can't be the way that it's drawn, they're not going to be able to both go north or south. They would need to either go west or north and west and south and west for the driveways.
Maybe as a compromise, just restrict lot four and nine.
Nine, that's fair.
To have split.
Because your concern, John, is probably on Bergamot Boulevard, right? Not necessarily Oregon Central Drive or.
Yeah.
Liberty Park, okay.
So the, the way that this was intended to set up was the SIPs, which have not come before you yet, is that the All-Star would sell the properties, either all or some of them, to a builder or multiple builders, and then the builders would be responsible for coming forward with the SIPs showing us how their plan meets the requirements of the GDP. So that would be something that would need to be passed on, at least for those two lots, that that's a requirement for the layout, that the driveways be split.
That's fair.
So it's going to be.
See, you understand that? Do you, you understand that? Well, you understand what he's asking, right, it's a lot four and nine.
Yeah, that's, I mean, of course, the preference is always to give the builder more flexibility, but, but I understand, yeah.
Well, it's just, again, we don't want too many, but you're going to have six curb cuts in a block, you know, so.
Yeah.
Less than that.
I'm going to do a little bit there.
Okay.
Okay.
Nobody objects? So we'll keep going.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
How'd you time that out, were you watching this online?
I just took, I wanted to probably get a show up later.
All right, what's the.
Well, you think that our meetings go too long? All right, thank you. Communication, missing this business. Eh, nothing, nothing for unfinished, nothing for new. Staff report, I'm sorry, there's no other public appearances, correct?
Correct.
All right, go ahead. What have you got, Lisa, anything about that you want to talk about in the member?
Okay, so, big thing would just be, I just got my report that I'm doing for the, the village board anyway, just some of the different meetings and trainings that I've been doing. Maybe Jeff can talk about any projects coming up, and we will have January the site plan review for JCPark, so we're going to have on December fourteenth, a park board review of the, I'm not sure what percent they're at.
That'll be.
Eighty percent.
Eighty to ninety percent, yeah.
Plans for JCPark, we'll be just providing a brief update on the park board conversation with the village board on the twentieth, and then at your January sixth meeting, we'll do the site plan review for JCPark. I think that's the big kind of municipal project coming up here besides renovation for the new village hall.
Correct.
I also wanted to make sure you all had the dates that we're planning for the planning commission meetings in twenty-two, these are all going to be the first Thursday, so not changing anything here. Joy and I have run through these and make sure they don't conflate with getting ready for elections, things like that, so please save the date, and if you know that you'll be unavailable, just let Joy know and we'll make sure that we've got a quorum ready.
Okay.
Well, I know that April seventh is National Beer Day.
Oh.
After the meeting.
But Jeff volunteered on May fifth, which is Cinco de Mayo.
You're right, great. I'll bring the blender.
And that is, no, that's right, I'll be here. That's opening week in the fishing season.
Sorry, we can't, we can't avoid every holiday.
I don't, I don't, I won't be going by Thursday night, so that's okay.
I would say on development stuff, if anyone's had a chance to go up and take a look at Autumn Ridge Phase Two A, if you haven't had a chance, the paving's done, the sidewalk's done, and the curb and gutter is done. At least the binder course of the pavement is done. It's kind of neat to see it taking shape back there, they're wrapping up work on the grading of the detention pond and everything. Remember, the park will be held over one year as they use kind of to, to move dirt around and stuff, but it's really looking nice back there. And then Highlands and Netherwood, Connor's not here anymore, but Highlands and Netherwood Phase Three, got their paving in for at least the binder and some of the surface course. So really neat to see kind of those two projects, it was kind of a push at the very end, but they got in and, and looked really sharp, we're going to start to see some really nice.
They had a lot, a lot of iron up there at back holes and.
Yep, yep, there was a lot of activity going on in the last month, and we were blessed with very good weather, and actually some warm weather in the last couple of days to, for them to wrap some stuff up, but.
Okay.
And we've been told that Bergamot might be bringing another phase in this next year, so we might be able to see that.
Anybody near the stoplight on Perry?
Well, yeah, Perry, so Perry and Janesville will, is still on schedule for construction, probably late summer and fall of this next year, that's the Perry-Janesville, South Perry Parkway and Janesville intersection. What else are we, huh?
The Prairie Brook apartment, stoplight.
Yes.
I'll make the stoplight.
Now this is why I don't get sleep at night, you know, as far as, yeah, the Prairie Brook Apartments Street, the intersection, that'll go to a four-way stop-controlled intersection at the Quick Trip slash Old BP down there, and we have a lot of things going on. We'll be hopefully letting the project for the village hall remodel out at the one-on-one Alpine Parkway, that's coming along nicely, and it's kind of exciting to see, and we'll be generating a nice new meeting space and AV system and everything that is going to make us look a lot, lot better and hopefully run efficiently, and our meetings will be half the time. No, but it's, it's neat to see a lot of things going on.
When is that scheduled for occupancy?
We're hoping by May. But we won't really know totally until we get a contractor on board and kind of look at their schedule, but that's what we're, we're hoping it'll be around that time.
Cinco de Mayo, we can.
It won't be early May.
After the takeover.
Keep coming here till we tell you differently.
Yeah. Just to add too, I haven't checked in with them in a couple of weeks, but last I heard from Lake Stone on the Prairie Brook project, the larger L-shaped building that has the seventy-one units, you've probably seen it going up, it's, I think, almost fully enclosed now, that is going to be the first one open for, to be rented out, I think they're aiming for July or August for those leases to start, so that stoplight will definitely be in place before then. And the other buildings are following closely behind.
Excellent. All right, planning staff meeting agenda, that's a meeting that occurred over, well, a month ago. Items for the future affordable housing strategies, TIF, TIF policy pack, driveway setbacks, annexation process, do you have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you all, nice meeting.